So, welcome to the Community and Environment for Services Committee of Tuesday the 4th of March. We're now beginning the meeting. Thank you everyone for coming along. So could we start with any apologies please?
Apologies have been received from councillors Jeremy and Wright.
Thank you. Next, on to the minutes for last, or the meeting from the 7th of January. Do we have any questions and comments or observations on that? We're going to do proposing second. Yeah. Oh, can I propose?
No.
It's been two months. Okay, can I have a proposal for that? Terry Lang and Seconda Yan Evans. Okay, all those in agreement? Excellent. Okay, do you have any declarations of de-closable pecuniary interest? Okay, so next we are on to the Town Team Managers' Report. If you have, would you like to give us any highlights or things that's to our attention today?
Yes, I think we've gone through. So we've done a lot of community work just recently, especially gaining close. So that's been a big contribution for all these people working with. As part of the open of our contract with the November to be in public park behind the RVD. And that's progressing well now. So again, there'll be a good community spirit in planting that up and getting everybody involved to make that area much nicer. And then the other thing is, we've been working closely with some of our residents on the speed issues. So as Gordon mentioned earlier, the public park. You know, there's a lot of issues around surrounding speed within the town. And we're currently trying to set the moulding, you know, you can see many similar parts of the place, safety camera partnership. And all the highways, everybody wants to say they've started discussing how we go forward, how we start to tackle some of these issues within the town. So the units that we're sort of working on at the moment, we're just analysing the works, how long the environment common. And we've now got some sheep also released onto the common again. So that's going really well with our new grazier. And the team is sort of been working hard to start preparations. We've got a few busy bits coming up shortly, where we've been involved with the community on the areas. So that'll include the areas in the three of the environment was common, the town centre. And we're also looking to support the residents on the annual state this time around, because we looked at all the other states, the previous list that we've done in the community. One of the other things we're now planning and putting a process in is the Fettford and Anglia in Bloom. So that's now starting to take shape. And we're starting to work with local businesses. And we've had great response last year with local businesses supporting our Fettford in Bloom. And we started the seven letters out this afternoon, and the residents of half an hour sending it down. And we were getting responded away with local businesses that must come on board to form again, actually, the city of town. Progress in Anglia. So there's some growth happening at the moment. Obviously, with what we're setting out, I'd have to say any questions, if anybody has any questions regarding the bits and pieces.
Nick, I very much enjoy taking part in the day of plants, which we're planting, who is in mind? And what, I didn't notice it, but what was the date for the community letter?
So we've got some releases on social media. I have a lot of dates with me at the moment. That's one of the social media pages, yeah. So they've been released. We've got some happening with our in Bloom volunteers. And one is happening with conservation volunteers, all the farm across common. And then we're having one on Saturday, which will include everybody coming on board, go onto the annual state and help clear some of the open space, green areas up. With the mini set errors.
Right. And is, are those the same as the fix for?
That's right, yes. So we've placed as well on the speaking point. So we've placed that we're going to fetch a hundred bags. We don't think that's unachievable from last year's. Sort of echoes, you know, we did get approved quite a lot of flections. So that's our pledge at the moment. Any more than we pledge, we can always add upon again, to update how many was sent to infect us.
Right. And hopefully we'll get a response from the local businesses.
Definitely, yeah. So all the letters have recently gone out to local businesses as well. So they're trying to draw up support again, a bit of the business, since we're now all just saving group writing fenders.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Miss T. I've had lots of feedback from the residents of New Charn and that area. It's nice, you know, with the back, the bookworms, the surface, and that area now, but I think it's always, behind that person's always. But everything still, I tell you, the residents.
And Stuart?
I think Kerry was, was, did you have that too? Um, yeah, I've had lots of positive feedback around in the paper, certainly, with the boards, et cetera. And it's, it's really good. Yeah, the contact we have, they're sort of really pleased and want to push it further.
Right, Kerry?
Um, thanks Kerry, I know you've worked on the public parks quite strongly. And we're going to get our set of a lot of the, quite in the, once that we have a lot of the back there. It looks really impressive. And I, I think that it will be a good legacy of this capital. In the same light. The sheep have become a feature of Fettford now. They are a key to the Fettford is known for. And it's really positive. I'm reading this here, they're on common, I look for you, mate. Just get your stuff on for now. That's the next step, I think. I, I think it's almost fair to say that the sheep problem, crossland a bit, an almost unqualified success. I might have been a few sort of particular problems who were west of it. But in terms of the reports, in terms of what we're seeing, that's all we're about. Regarding any improvement, I was hoping the companies everywhere read, with what the officers, and we have good ties over there. Just the people channeling, it's certainly about roses, to be honest. It is working well. I think the job with the shop going this year, I believe. So let's keep it, you know. Regarding the market, over the lead minutes from the last one, which mentioned that we were looking into picking more gazebos. Interesting about them, yeah, keeping us aware of the gazebos, aren't we anywhere?
So we did look at the budget, so just what the limited financial years come in, or considering it being published here, to be able to discover those. Everything is ready to go. We just need that to announce, you know.
Yeah.
And we are working with local businesses, and I see we can give some different support. So the self-indulgence, and on the seminars today in Weyre. Where the National Markets, and they're very keen to support, they also appreciate it, but the other twice in the market, we've got a particular day on the big schedule to put any other stores in. So they're really keen to work and see a stride on marketplace and see that use more, like we've got fantastic opportunities with the space, and we'll be utilizing a lot more of the lot of airs. With different sort of market events. And we've also dug some of the introduction of green trojans. So the big circuit around encouraging new trojans to come onto markets now. And the world of businesses are changing. These entrepreneurs just send out opportunities, going to the local shopping units because of the rents and prices. So markets are starting to place for each side on the local business. So we're looking at that opportunity now, working with the national markets, so we're going to see if we can drive that as well.
Good. Excellent. I'm told that this is for a lot of market folks, Tuesday's not my great day. The late days for the week are better, because we've talked stuff up all weekend, so I think it's like getting young trojans, seeing different offerings in market. Of the desire, working around, sitting out, sort of. Um, so thanks very much for that. I know, I've said it before, you're very keen and very invested in doing great jobs and that's excellent. My last point is regarding allotments. And we've seen Teddy there for best. Good. I'm a bit relieved by that, because it feels like, well, I'm interested in pretty sure. A bit, because it seems once again, a lot nice, and I'm really doing what they're supposed to. And for me, I'm, we've got, I have two options here. One option is something keeping up the chains, which I really want to drive personally. The other one is charging approval before it, because it's costing us.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you for the right before.
Thank you. Just have a good, the S and J, so we've got the S and J contracts now on board. He's very keen to engage the lot holders. And he does recognise, obviously, as I say, they're not, you know, thinking chickens are nicely published. And so we've got some informal meetings out that I would be able to, I was supposed to obviously ask for.
Sort of.
Um, so we're going to reintroduce those and live in by the new S and J contract to engage with the allotment holders. And I mean, he's happy to offer free advice to all our lot holders, that do have livestock. So we'll try that option, but I would say maybe some of them do have to improve some stuff fast. We've got the boss, I think, of the S and J, it costs the element model, the sites, I think, for months, because I've done absolutely.
Matt, do you need a couple of questions?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. First, with Pocket Park, I was in the town on Saturday and there was a group of people looking at the Pocket Park, which is not even built yet. So that's, that's what we aspire, bring things to park, and it is. And I'd like to say really well done on the sheep, on the council park. Particularly with Udi Viraun, who's always been up there. And, and actually, keeping the lid on that, as far as the town council have gone, because that could have just been a lot of our press. So I think that's, that's a moving trust, actually. And finally, I'd like to congratulate you on the, on the support that the community's really watched. Mostly because the sand too, that we purchased many years ago for this council, laying in the cover for a long time. And it's by your efforts, it has, that's managed to get the new sites and been by our, the same. Now, I know Philip Vickson has done a lot of work on, on all those reports that she's written, and they're really, really good. So I think we squeezed every bit of light we can out of that sand too, and it's not a false lie. So well done on that. Well done on the focal point for the communities to come and have some lights to, to vent that back. Because it clearly isn't the police anymore, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Stuart?
Yeah, just one thing, I'm sort of, Chris, out here, it's us. While I can object to people parking in front of houses, except on the back of Stirling Close, where people park in front of the house in which it looks very vulnerable for security. But then they're driving from the grass straight past the road. Now, there is a track now that's developed, where they just put it down on the road or grind it on rather than go round it, which looks a bit messy down the course. I did, it's the test that, can't, oh, my, how tall is Breckland?
Yeah, we certainly passed that one in any amount. So we have a big work.
There's value of such, certainly, but then it stops, you know. So it will be, yeah.
Um, we do have a big work in partnership, being a relationship with Breckland, and so I can pass over to the appropriate officer and get them to look into that.
It's more about health and safety rather than.
Yeah.
Yaniv?
Thanks, guys. I also wanted to say thanks to you, you teach all the work. So I'm also going to include plenty of things. And I'm, so in this regard, it's a little made of, it sounds, hopefully, if you're interested in part of the project, I can have a look at it. Another area is for classifieds, probably right, like, so suppose one was not the consequence of having been registered in that way.
So it's a commercial, we do get a bit more sort of assistance and help through that, and more of the violence. So we will be able to get more grants. Um, once they become registered, it's only on the private site, they do get that biocaster finishing, draws more interest publicly, publicity wise. So it's a win-win situation, all of the things are combined. We've got the right grades as I'm on now, which I'm pretty much sure that's good, you know, because everybody's working their best now to get any science around. And I think it'll be a win-win once we get these plastic finishes going forward, with the right bros and management, we can then go to the next city, start a rail for those areas.
Very, thank you. And one other question, your lots of work report, is there a specific reason why wasps are considered a pest for your audience?
I think it's more for the sense that they become a pest. Obviously, they go in their sheds and then they want to go in the sheds to get the tools. So that's the reason why they're classified as a pest on the sites. Anywhere other than the site they're buying. But at these jumps, they, they've got them to their sheds and to build the nests. They've just been in the wrong place for a long time. But they are a great insect, you know, living in the wild, yeah, environment, absolutely.
Great.
Hi Chris? Yeah, obviously, the band, another development, just having, yeah. I think a lot of it is going to, we've not enforced as little as the problem. Because we, we had rules there that a lot of the culprits must, if they have chickens that were in the, must be accident on the floor. They're not allowed to feed from the floor anymore. But we've not actually enforced them, for the problem, which is not, it's mainly due to that stuff.
Supposing we're working hard, and obviously it's working on the, it's one of these possible large bases, speaking highly, and I remember she said, and for one heart, that's not sound, you know, the livestock. So here we go, regular inspections on those areas, but we need S and J officers really on board to get our sites around. So they're going to do, yeah, and have inspections on those areas. Same percentage, again, not applying to the rules, will be, you know, notified, there is a potential, but it will be, so the bottom, you know, through that and, and generally, so they're reached, it's the following.
Not only a couple of new tracks, they're probably bunches, including dogs themselves, so if you treat them, dogs, not because of the things, which is still going, you know, your own respect. It's not big enough. I mean, you're always in that, you know, that's why I love, I love you, you're always a better person. Never, never, maybe you're more of a friend.
I think we should also, you know, these scoring pieces, you know, finds out.
You're about.
There is the only reason for that, I suppose, since we want to go with this, given, it's an actual areas. But I think enforced, yes, absolutely. If people don't find it, of course.
We should put it against you, that example, yeah. And it's not, it's not fair on yourself or carbon, you have to do this and that, so, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes.
Can I just? Can I just say something? We are looking at the rules and the regulations. The problem is, we missed them this year. And what we're hoping to do is bring them, make them more stringent and bring them in for next year, when we start off with a new contract. But because we missed it this year, we can't then roll it out halfway through the year. But we will look at all of that, your concerns.
Okay, was there anything else Nick you wanted to?
I would, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm doing it. I've seen this box, sorry, I know this. It's very, oh, we're all happy, or what?
We are, yeah, so take my map, and said, yeah, so then obviously, knowing that they're monitored, you're sorry, to be as well, and places where they can be monitored, and to give some data, so they're back. And our next slide was obviously next door, so I went to Pocket Parks, and created, we installed some switch boxes around the Carnegie. So there'll be lots of bits happening, so get yourselves on board with that, as long as we're in months, really, for a stage.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Nick. Great. Right, let's move on. So, financial reports, to receive a note that preliminary financial reports for the 10 months ended 31st of January 25. Was there anything you wanted to particularly draw our attention to?
No. In a word, unless there's any questions.
I'm sure it's to be gathered with the call service.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, so we shall move on to a small grant. I think there was one small grant that I have to take there. Um. Right, from the Law for Community Law Service. Hopefully, everyone's had a look over that. Was there any comments on that application? Terry?
Yeah, I'm puzzled, because we're spending quite a bit of money for providing a very similar service.
It's similar, but it's not the same. So that offering more variety of services. We're offering very niche to do with benefits that can be claimed. I think this is generalised law services, which is more broader.
I was just, sure.
Yeah.
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 Father? Yeah, I'm trying to, because, um, actually, I think this is the last, the last of the kids.
So the benefit of a fish will have the situation should be that. Uh, they have to walk for, um, uh, slightly in conserves is more like it's next step level.
Yeah.
Um, so it's like one complex stage, there is like the integral advance, uh, it's it's in a nice kind of way. Um, I'm surprised that they don't. I never saw it under the time that they are. Um, and not on our research, they are sort of the only nations to do this, they do. And, and I see some kind of debt at the time, we had very much risked that was on here. What I find important is with personal opinion of mine, is that they could recruit the volunteers down more locally. This area rather than actually bringing the volunteers from the machinery wasn't meant to go on in a film or a ship out to the other coast like ourselves. So we do them locally, but you can take the short ones. Uh, I can't, I know against it's affecting us. I've said I know the work they do, it's got a lot of value, uh, for those that end up on the way.
Can I just say, um, I listened to, um, the report at the breakfast meeting and I, I was, um. I was impressed by what they were offering the residents of Fethford. They do sit at the Charles Bower Centre. Um, they don't have to come to Fethford, but they do. And I think it's a good support for our residents.
Yeah, I think the other thing just follow on because I saw that presentation style is the more funding they have, the more people they can help because they're at capacity. So I think it's, yeah.
Good. They are no special. I think even when it's been coming off the week to less, but. Um, that's, that's the most special thing they are used for us. Things they can take on, they are restricted because there's a whole one and then very little. And not enough volunteers and services. Um, so they don't get it.
Yeah, right. Okay. Sounds like we're in support. Do we have a proposer press? And a second of Carla? All those in favour? It's everybody. Is everybody? Yes. Okay, great. Let's move on. Lovely. So progress on actions from previous meetings. Just for relief. Um, comments on these. If that's someone who mentioned in this report as well, whether it's in updates.
Can I just say that a couple of these have been. Taken off of this spreadsheet by accident and they will be put back on. What it is, they were really early ones. And, um, they thought they'd been dealt with, but they hadn't been dealt with. So we'll stick them back on and you'll see them at the next meeting. If they've not been completed. Are you happy with that, Nick?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Can you get that sorted to put them back on, please?
Okay. Right, on to the ground water and monitoring. Um. Okay, we've got the reports on ground monitoring, which was, um, really easy.
Issue.
Um, lots of numbers. Uh, right. Do we have any comments or questions on the ground force monitoring?
I think, um, it hasn't changed in the last two years. Yeah.
But hadn't the Lenny's nitrate successfully, uh, being picked up in the water, um, monitoring? Um, so we've spoken to the office on the side that that is a powerful progression of gathering. Um, we are still trying to work with the Environment Agency to see if we can cut down the quantity of testing. Um, but we're just going to come back. Um, yeah, as soon as we have a net base on it, you know.
We'd quite cut it down to twice a year because then that will save on costs. And because there's no changes quarterly. Well, over the last couple of years, we, we need to really sort of look at it as six monthly and then yearly.
Uh, Col.
I was just gonna ask if, uh, there was the one that was like, if they want to test. Or if we knew if we managed to reduce the amount of apparently because of that.
Terry?
Um, you asked me a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So my question is on that subject. However, if, if an architec's done a chance. Are we likely to renew the amount of barrels we can accommodate?
Good question.
This would not have thresholds here. So why would we kept as a number of barrels? That's, that's the question I would have.
Is it, Nick, can we go back to the Environment Maintenance Agency? Because if we could increase them barrels, that would help us no end. Um, just to let you know that I think we have already exceeded our barrels for like. Basically, we have two a month, as you know, and I think we're already at nine. Is that correct, Nick?
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
And we're only, um, two months into the year.
I'm still one twenty, wasn't it?
Twenty four.
Four, three years, best of all year. Oh, wow. Um.
Not considering you've got twenty seven thousand residents.
No. Well, really, there was another search.
That's the next one. Leading on.
Okay, any other comments on ground monitoring? Excellent. Right. So on to new cemeteries provision in Fethford, which. Is very interesting. Actually, I was reading all about green cemeteries last night. Um, any, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just, just one that has become apparent to me today. So he's in the last six years, they've only wanted water. By one. And if anybody's visited, it is absolutely excellent. And it's really well worth the visit. Simply because of what they've done. And we could copy a lot of that stuff in our centries. And, you know, ground holes or that kind of thing, we could grow a lot of us. So it isn't just about RISB, which I even often think of because it's been established for a long. Um, but there is a lot of, there's been built within the last six years. So it's much more modern and might be something that would help steer us. Should we be looking at something new in the town?
Okay.
So is that, that one's classified as a green cemetery, is it?
No, it's not green.
No, it's not.
Green ones.
Knowledge, yeah, only.
It's all the, it's all the one thing I'm writing.
So. Basically, I've had a conversation, um, with the Sue. And, um, they're happy to provide a cemetery, but what they need is a stare from council on which kind of way you want to go, whether you want to go for it. A normal conventional cemetery or whether you're looking for a green cemetery. Um, because that will sort of indicate where they can put it within the Sue. Because they have a bit of land where there's lots of trees that we could use for a green cemetery and then make the burials amongst the trees. Or otherwise, the other part of the land is not quite in Fethford and we would then have to negotiate. With a next door parish, whether we could utilise a pit of their land and a farmer. And his dog and.
Any car parks we could use?
That's all that. It's good to know there is potential vanalation or petition of any sort anywhere. And it was so scotch. Um, I would be a bit worried about taking another test fit. Just, yeah, really for allocation or speaking, we have issues with priority, who can spare it. On the grounds that when our policies or our industry lets them, they're making sure there is priority to be buried locally, why not? Because of the, the land for it. If we were, if we were to negotiate anything, then we would go through hurdles. The time and cost and we don't share in that. Well, we've got a potentially other inflation as well. Which is not good. If we can make people likely care, we may demonstrate this for order. And then that would be, I think there would be a whole more budget perhaps a bit more, so quicker to change. Get done. And nowadays it's all about, you know, being natural, she's going one also making you in some gentleman's way for for all. We still can provide the transition of those in our current cemetery. But by using that as a special, um, not fully, even those that we consider very massive, like women, you know, with anyone. Also, if that's a, an issue of the costs for. Then we have to be, it's going to be very, so of course my hand, why maybe we should, we give one of the last ones by any different as a various. My suit from that sort of reasons as well. Never just shoot the nonsense. And I think I would now, now, we have done a couple of more complete investors. I think we should, we should feel for the privilege within the numbers of the brain. That's my question for you guys.
Mac. Thank you for the question.
You have to go after everyone's anger. However, you can see it anymore. The old way of it is, do you want the piece of ground we're part of anyway, and we're going to love it, we're going to sell it. Or would you like this to be really very difficult? Which will probably, and, and the other thing is about green cemeteries and all is you can have it as above. Um, and so you can almost buy central department to find out. The great part about the new site is you can design it as you wish, treat it as you wish. So I get it, it's a part piece. Of course, as soon as you do that, then all your markers are going to end up as all markets. You then have a problem with can parking, it's generally, they don't see, you've got to start. Teriation back or whatever. And actually, what should be something that's simple to go on. Quite complicated and actually quite difficult to make stand. So. I get it. But if we had a wooden one, it would be difficult then to make about a partly a normal cemetery. Uh, whereas in each of the new one, you could do a bit of both. I don't think, um, you know, we've done an extension of the town for, so it's not impossible. And I can't see that any of our village will be that desperate. Not to give us, um, or not to have it be in bars, otherwise they didn't care for costs.
It would just be over the north side of the A eleven, the new cemetery would be. Um, as the Sue sits.
So I think if you, if we think of some of, like, this new premise all of it, which is just over the road away from there. And that's, that's in a very similar situation, you know, okay, uh, the state is moving right up close to it now, but previously that was a little bit of a delay. And historically, once upon a time, London Road was a little bit out of town.
Hmm.
So, you know, I don't think that's a, a stop, it's probably going to be.
Terry?
Yeah, I. I think, um, I'm probably as soon as I, um, if we go with a green cemetery, it's not turned about. However, if we go with the. You know, we have a new cemetery, we think we now are specifically extended to choose. And I think that's the better way of going.
Do we have information on, it's, I found it hard to tell from the report. So how many spaces each, like how many plots?
Well, what, what we've got to work out is I've asked for about, um, a fifteen to twenty five year provision for Fethford for burials. Um, what they'll, what we need to work out, once we've got an idea of what. Way you want to go, whether you want to go gre- green or traditional, we can then work out how many. Um, acres that is from our own cemetery for each burial plot, we can work it out. But until that point, it's not worth working out because if you go green, it works out slightly different to the amount of land we'll need as opposed to a traditional. Or we could ask for maybe half traditional, half green. On the edge of the, where they've got to give us the woodland site and see if we can maybe talk and consider something that's a bit of both.
Yeah, political.
People break it down and then it's on top of the top of that, it's a bit of a name and then it's a water first, so it's a bit of a bar, some decisions about it. I can also ask because the one to long with it, which I was for, uh, often is leaving the birds, but we have. About, uh, different types of burials, uh, maybe like, uh, ashes, the ash burials and all that stuff. Where have we had to let?
Um, it's.
I think it's what all the options we have now before we're in the market trying to.
So it's further down. So we do not have a problem with any ashes. We can, we can bury as many ashes as we want because that doesn't. Um, play around with a water table. It's the burials. And we, at the moment, we are restricted to twenty four burials.
I understand now, just saying we were trying to do traditional offerings within the ground space.
Yeah.
Looking at it, not long ago, it was last year.
Yeah, some of, some of it's in the board that we've talked about.
Yeah, so there's not many, there are any good things that we looked at.
Yeah, they're in, they're later on in the meeting, if. We've got another report coming up further on in the meeting that discusses. The current cemetery and the different things that we can do with that.
Um, okay. That doesn't really give us an answer.
No.
I mean, I feel like. The feeling I'm getting is that we want to look at the site slightly outside of town with the option of combining green and traditional cemetery. Because there's, I mean, there's not a huge amount of information here. So we don't know, for example.
It's very, um, it's very vague.
Yeah.
Because until we pinpoint what we actually would like and then we go and do a site visit. Um, and then, I mean, we're talking probably two, three years down the line and we're not, it's not going to be a quick fix. But what it is going to be is a succession for future councils and for the town to increase their burials. They haven't even put the roadway in yet, which would even run to one of these cemeteries. So that's how much further down the line is. And that's why it's so vague.
Yeah, yeah. Is your hand up?
Um, yes, well, I'm, so I was just wondering whether there is any stopping this from, um, or taking a traditional cemetery, but then a car on the halfway off to. If you agree to, is there, do you have a way of applying that?
No, they haven't, they haven't stated any reason. Um, the problem is that when we looked at the map and looked at the, where the Sue is. It was very difficult to find somewhere where a cemetery could be put because when it was originally thought about in two thousand and nineteen. Nobody thought about a cemetery requirement. So it wasn't actually put into the Sue.
And Terry?
How urgent is staying sitting on this?
Sorry.
How urgent is the decision of this?
It's, it's not urgent. It's not.
Yeah, but when, when it's the worst, you correct.
Do you have it?
Work to go goodbye.
I don't, I feel like it's more of a, we need more information, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So what I need to, so do you want me to go back and, I mean, I need an idea of what you're leaning towards so that we can then go on the ground, put boots on the ground and have a look. Because until I'm physically there, because I don't really know the Sue. At the further reaches, because I haven't been there myself, um, we need to understand what it looks like.
Well, that's not true. It worked through that because, you know, the taste will add up. But more importantly, we really need to learn what both sides look like on the grounds. Um, to make a decision because otherwise you're making it an isolation from the other part. And I'm guessing it's going to be difficult because they can't even really want to stick on a map probably. I appreciate it, right, with the way. Down the line, but the first question has got to be, okay, we're interested in both sides. We're looking at a mix of central use, um, but we'd like to see what was going on, that really looks like to us. Because it's still getting to that stuff at the moment, isn't it?
Yeah, it's certainly closer when I feel concerned about access, people, parking and that kind of thing. And then the one further out, can people walk to the cemetery like, you know?
I think it would be too far for anyone to.
Or will they eventually want to?
I mean, but they will be able to cycle there with the act of travel. So if anything. If we ever join them up. Um. So can I suggest that the working party just be aware that whoever volunteers? That, that will have to be a day meeting because I don't think that, um. Sue will come out and meet us sort of later in the evening. They might do a five P M, but. It's a bit more difficult at seven, eight P M.
Then work with that as far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Do you want volunteers now?
Yes, please.
Any volunteers for? Working.
Very well, probably after the work.
Working party of ones.
Yeah, what to do, yes.
No.
I'm the manager, also saying about flash, because it's pretty dangerous, I mean, and not. I'm well getting to do it as a stay.
If we have a working party of Mac, myself and Nick, who will be maintaining it going forward with his team. Then maybe, um, we can then bring it back to a future council meeting with further updates.
You happy with that? By interest email sound. Yes. Okay, is that satisfactory before we move on?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to five hundred two twenty four, the. No. Uh, report for first memorials and memorial trees in London Road Cemetery. So these are the options for, um, enhancement, so I think if we can add it into the London Road Cemetery. Comments? We'll be back.
Um, will we not have the teddy doll?
So I want to get the teddy.
I, I, I've said that.
Well, it's quite cute.
The teddy.
Oh, I like that hand.
Um, especially trust.
Oh, the face is terrific.
And so I was just gonna sort of update in the memorial trees. Now, we, we talked about this quite some time ago in council, we said it would be a quick fix. And a million things have gone anyway, I've seen it, we do that. But I still believe that by doing the, uh, memorial trees, it's the first way of taking an income so that. So that we can then start through the rest and perhaps providing, you know, set up a teddy doll. And the last, all the more of all this stuff that actually is better for us in the, um, in the area for nitrates. Um, but also it is more of a, we busy, so. The way we've got our, um, from A P range plots at the moment is very quite dated now, it's a very old way of doing it. And frankly, it looks like a lot of garden slabs, footed, which have been. There are a lot of better ways of doing it, um, which I think people will, will grant to once they see it. And also with memorials, you don't necessarily have to bury anybody. So. If we picked, um, you know, a family member that passed away many years ago, somebody wants to say, well, you just set all in through the, through, or is that not possible? They can do it. So the memorial trees are a really good way in. I did count and we've got a couple that wouldn't be very well. But from my point of view, I think if we did ten of those to begin with. Uh, knowing that we're not going to sell them tomorrow. Um, that would be a really good start for ten. The wood, if I had to do it, and I'm saying that I'm not doing it, very minimal. So there's substantial woods to our house, place of our ground there, tree garden and state southern ownership. Or getting up to the white house. There are, once there are memorial eyes, uh, or there's a memorial song on the other. Then it's a simple background replacement of plaque there. I just think it's something we need to get on quite quick. And also from a, from a sales point of view. Um, there is no better time than like this week before the blossom comes. Because we want to have those pictures able to, to sell the, the blossoms for people. So it might be a bit slow to begin with, but I haven't taken entries that we're talking about.
So just to let you know, I had a meeting with Mac regarding this last night and, um. He's given me some pictures of what we can do. It's very simple, um, to make them into, um, the memorials, very, very simple. Um, and it's a quick fix. The trees are already there in place and even if we sell one.
Um, interestingly, the plats you look at on the pictures there, which are really good for, um, saying outside of weather. Today I was showing some pictures of some of the better ones, which are made locally, uh, in Ocho. And they're, they're cast. So they're cast metal, um, and they're cast with the stake in them, so the boss there, about eighty pounds. But they're really, really good looking heritage items. But, you know, somebody might have designed it on them. There, there's quite a good option there. It's like something that's, that doesn't look too tacky. I don't get very ardent, are they? You've got the tiles, it's really deep.
So. Do you want to do the memorial trees then we'll come back to?
Yes, that feels easier.
You've skipped.
Um, yeah, I didn't want to, let's go over. So I feel like we're all pretty happy with the memorial trees. And I think the price for ten years, that's really reasonable to ask people to pay. It's something that.
Six hundred and thirty, yeah, it's pretty funny.
Yeah, I think that's great. Um, so is there any other comments on the trees specifically?
Um, just one thing to add on that. Obviously, when they're in more, also they've then got to be plotted, so our benches are, you know, our set of regulations that are similar to the benches and slotting of time tattoos. There is a little bit of a frustration work goes with it. But it's asking you pretty much every now and then, but we must make sure that we get that right for the offset, otherwise they could become. Um, a disaster.
Yep, definitely, hundred percent.
Okay. So do you want me to vote on both of these or?
Yeah, both together.
Both together. Okay. So a recommendation is here to agree to the proposal for the pilot scheme of memorial trees. And to agree to the cemetery officer producing process for selling and maintenance of the memorial trees. And bring it back to the next committee meeting to be agreed. So can I have a proposer? Mac, seconder? I hope that Stuart's racing. All those in favour? Hey, everybody. That's nice.
Now, now we'll go, now we'll go back to the baby item. So the reason behind, um, us bringing the baby, um. Memorial into the cemetery is that, um, we had a baby that was buried and we're not able to a hundred percent locate where the baby is. Um, because in nineteen sixties, they didn't keep the records as up to date as they should have done. Um, we think we've found the spot and we've done a lot of work on this. And even with the, the member, the public, um, brother who was, um, contacted us. Um, Nick and I did a site visit and we had a conversation with him. We showed him all the books. Um, and so we thought, we thought that it might be a good idea to put something. Like this into the cemetery, but I have spoken to the cemetery officer and he said to note, to date, we haven't been asked. For any baby memorials. But if we're not offering that, nobody might ask. So it's a, it's a difficult one on. How much do you spend and how much will it pay for itself?
Mac.
So my mind was just, yeah, did it tap on the back of that slide? Um, we could find some of the money for the memorial trees, with the little washers a little bit. I think you're actually right. If, if it's not there to offer them, it's not there to be done.
Yeah.
And so, and also with it anyhow, it's all that it sounds, uh, our business like. You really have to advertise it to the public.
Yeah.
Otherwise, people which are buying that something end up in this there. Uh, and that includes finding a bit of a launch, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And that's just that we're really scared this and it's available and something, it's still, we're trying to provide, um, a sale we're trying to make.
So are you saying that? Once we sell some of the memorial trees, maybe earmark that money to then buy a baby memorial? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I think alongside that. You know, there's nothing wrong with fantasizing about, you planning to do something. Are there anybody who has a. Who would be interested in having any type of memorial and give a sort of work desire of it? I think that's all, does two things. One is to make sure that you've got money for your new memorial. And also if you've got a few people who are going to pay some money and book a name on a memorial as well.
Thank you. Terry?
Um, yeah, uh, just out of interest, really, oh, the baby.
Sorry?
Sounds a baby.
Oh, that's a good question. Not true.
Because I think before the interview, I know. Where's the fifth last three years, two years?
I think a baby would be.
Yeah, yeah. There's one still in bed. You get it all from the top of some.
Don't you go on.
There's a fifth stillborn, they just almost not taking away, are they?
No, not anymore.
No. So, so part of the reason a lot of the cemeteries in Dada Saya, in Jatun.
Yeah.
Part of the reason they're done is because historically those, uh, sites up close to hospitals or any of that. They, they were to bury in landmark graves, so over the hospital wall, buried and, um, you know, not marked anyway. But of course, that, that isn't recorded, but it comes through, uh, then years later. So when they discovered us out there. Similar things happening in, in other places, such as.
Similar things happen in in other places, such as better, whereas babies were often just snuck in at the bottom. You know, uh, relatives, because they know where they must be going. Um, more words, they were they were buried in a damaged hospital somewhere and nobody knows where that is. So. It's it's often a it's a different legacy thing. It does pack out, so.
No.
Do you like that? I don't care. Yes, so it's certainly right. I mean, I might be some advice you could give someone.
Yes, we can contact other cemeteries and find out what they deem as a baby.
I do.
And what then becomes a small child.
Yeah, but would you would you need if the family felt, I want to have my eight year old child under this teddy bear statue and they.
We're not going to say no, are we?
Wouldn't matter, would it? Don't think it really matters. It's.
Rather than. Rather than say baby memorial, we could call it child memorial.
Yeah, we have to spark fire, which is a mile to the. They've gone into cemetery now, haven't they? Eight years.
We have got a baby section, haven't we?
Actually, if a memorial is very close to that baby section, then it can be become a focal point around where others are.
Yeah.
So and the other baby section often has children rather than babies in it, so. And so I think the other thing is that the pictures below the teddy bear, so you've got the uh baby, you've got the hat. Actually, quite clear that it is a baby.
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
Um. If if we're thinking about doing it after the we've made a bit of money and had a chance to talk to people, do we need to decide on a design?
No.
We take a bit of time to think about.
I think that um we need to do a piece of work around. How much take up there would be within the community and then look at how many memorial trees. We're selling and then bring it back to another meeting.
Yeah. Wanting to vote, you can go first.
Yeah, just um to be first, I'm going to back now the lead.
You need to vote. Okay, can we just have a proposer that for the party to defer to later need to do more research? Proposers.
Yeah.
Terry, second, the first, all those in favor?
Okay, I just think that I also want that you want to. I have some environment on that. Tell me, can you pull the long tomorrow? So far, I'm not lost, but the same thing. Yeah, I think that's that's going on. People have seen it also.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I answered the question.
Uh, I'm going to be concerned that it really ties to the same memorial trees. Um, it is basically that it doesn't ever actually have a losing, it doesn't margin sound what they're doing. So let's wait and see.
Yeah. I think what we're, I think what we've got to do is we've got to work to the community, see if um how many people would be interested in something in this. Um, within the cemetery and then we'll get an idea and then come back to the next council meeting. Yeah, exactly.
I know the answer, but paying for yourself within uh two years or or maybe that and there's still places all of my own.
Yeah. Yeah, it would only take five. To pay for itself. So I'm sure that, yeah, we could. And it would be a shame not to have it in the cemetery as an offering, um especially in such a large town. I think you're the biggest, fifth or fourth biggest town in the county. So, you know, really, we should be offering these kind of things.
Even if it was a history base on uh in past, often what happened with babies lost and, you know, leaves creating families. They're not necessarily specific, but then we think of offering this.
Yeah.
You know, then it would be nice of, um, you know, trigger memory, it's something that will happen to those kids. And we'll do something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So events on Bonn, off, on my.
It's a challenge, you know, it's a lot of comment.
Sorry?
That says, this is far, but then underneath it says not.
Melford, yeah. No, it doesn't on my. Well, oh, yeah, that's me. It's Melford, isn't it?
It is Melford.
It's me not knowing the town. Sorry, guys.
Interchange. So it's Melford.
Are they not in the same place?
Um, no. Bonn has someone has she.
I will go out tomorrow. I will go for, I will go for tomorrow. I'll go for another tour.
Okay, all right. So Melford Common, any comments on Larry Gray or the circus that's here?
I never probably know guys. I've seen usually places in the vision I've been there, but I have people service. Uh, that's a deeply got milk common usually goes on the wreck, uh, but the fact that. It's, you know, the way they've added on the red, they've had animals running before they're going across the wreck. So the concern is that all the animals since feeling sheep, I don't know. So.
Well, there's no sheep. It's Melford Common.
Is there not? Okay, go go across the bar, go across the castle hill.
Yeah. So when you say animals, do you mean they're pets? They don't have animals.
No, they do have that animal circus.
They have animals in the circus?
Yes.
I thought we said we weren't. I don't think.
No, it's.
It's it's not an animal circus, is it? I thought it was people. I thought it was people. No, I got told it's people. There's no animals. Yeah.
But we have a rule in the.
Yeah, we do. We do.
Apologies.
There is no animals. No, no, not that time.
Are you still animals on the wreck?
So more recently.
Never known if there's a search on Melford Common.
No. Um.
Have we had Russell Circus before next?
So we've had Russell previously in the past. Uh, the only speculation I would suggest for the committee is that we go back and we say about their flyer post.
Yeah.
It's been that following the event, because we have had a previous uh circus in town, not this one. Uh, but the previous one, the big visit, um, it was like with a lot of boards that cruised a lot of havoc around the town. Um, just because of the immense amount they put around advertising. Um, also around the town centre. So I think we just have to stick a lady. We're happy for them maybe to attend, but we happen to agree. Uh, but there is a speculation, I must agree, um, with the posters to be, yeah, kept at a minimum now. Um, and also that it's clear that after the event.
Okay, so minimal posters and cleared up. And if they didn't do that, they won't be.
That would be invited back.
Yeah.
And then they're going to be told to leave it as.
Absolutely.
That'll be passed the.
So it's going to be two weeks after we.
Yeah.
Was there, so.
Might have said grass.
They're bringing, they're going to start with as well. So that's part of the purpose, part of the bar down to the facilities. And maybe they're in the same area as well.
That will give the grass a little bit of time to eat between. Yeah, that is normal.
This is wet.
That's it.
Sorry, we've got the E day.
We have.
Common as well.
Yeah.
Um, so that passed one close.
Yeah. B day is not until the tenth. So you've got fourteen days, another two weeks. Um. What do you think about this, Nick?
I think I think we'd be able to, I think the only concern I have is the flyer page here. Uh, that's sort of just the situation that the clear the goals. Um, and the town team will look under the stands, make sure that they are being there at the time. We will just simply undermine the residents of the town there as well. Just to respect the residents of doing that, uh, maybe. Um, so I think that's important that we do make people agree with the concept, especially Martin. Uh, just make sure that they are a part of what we are asking them to do.
Okay.
But one time happy, obviously, go ahead and check it to the stuff we're doing before.
Yeah, I'm ju- just thinking about the E day, because if it is wet and it gets all churned up, is that a concern?
Yeah.
Mike, how's it used?
If it gets wet, like you said, wet, it's wet and it's not. That's that's potentially where we would have a car park for the similar parts of the room.
Yes, the lower part that we've got using the car park for the E day. But it's only got to be, we're not going to offer it up as a car park. We've got to let people park there. Should they wish to, but we're not going to provide parking attendance or become. That for the day.
But that's that's why I'll know if we want to pass.
Yeah.
You can be fine.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, right. Um, any other comments? Okay, so um we're happy to agree both to um Larry, oh, God, Larry Gray and Russell Circus to hire. Melford Common for the day is providing a proposal. Terry and a seconder, Carla, all those in favor? Is that an absolutely last?
First to the circle, the front of the circus.
Okay.
Because I think they would do that. You have the conversation.
Hmm. So.
Okay, right, on to cemetery. So we have. A lot of information here. Um. I must admit, I briefly looked over it, but it's very a lot of information.
Yeah, I think um I don't think there's many. Is there many changes?
So what we're just summarising ourselves, so basically Kerry is sort of around, they've run through our um laws and regulations of the cemetery. Um, previously very wishy washy, um, is it certain apologies, it's very not understandable. Uh, when you go and read, you know, the last thing you need to do is start looking up terms of reference of what being related to. Uh, so we've simplified it um in reading terms. Uh, but there's no considerable change. Everything is remaining the same. It's just word and more simplified now for people to understand. Uh, they're going through a tough time.
Okay, so it's kind of the whole, because my comment is basically that often when we redo these, we just have highlighted the parts that have changed if it's all reworded.
It would be a mass of yellow blood.
Okay, so we have any um comments or questions in there?
Um, I think it's been this word, I would like to suggest that over the next year, we consider. Whether we're going to ask even multiple plastic cloud or the cemetery. Because you know, plastic debris got in there. Uh, you know, it's just material I can go into the ground, it's by substantial.
Yeah.
Now, that's a really difficult ask for people with this. Now, we do it because they have to keep all the new flowers up there. But I think if we're serious about our. Environment concerns and we don't. And it might take a year. So not for now, but in the future.
Because there's that issue, there's people eating the packaging on bouquets as well as that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a waste of it as well. We'll tend to find, you know, there's mackens, a lot of people use, you know, plastic up there. Uh, a little bit of soys and so on is a bit more here. Uh, my fish and flowers, uh, basket gardens as well, farmers' elephants.
Um, Stuart?
Yeah, I've just thought of this, the way to just sort of leave way, obviously, I understand you've got to be a parochial to be sort of correct or very infected. But there are sometimes instances where the person's lived in theft most of their life and they're had to go to a nursing home outside that thing. It's came for their needs, but they pass away and then they're not allowed to actually be buried in Thetford. Which, you know, if they've been sort of lived most of their life in that, but then Thetford is their home.
I agree. We should allow up to a certain point, like um twenty four months or something like that, because I know that other councils do. Um, to allow them, if they can prove that they were lived in Thetford.
There is a speculation in our laws and regs.
Okay.
I'm not sure actually amount, but I believe you do stipulate.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, yeah, we accept, um, yeah, that's the sort of.
So that's fine.
Or. I'll ask the local minister that it wasn't the staff who was on the table or. Because there was a reference somehow and it was being taken care by family members towards the end of the month. It was pretty stressful, yes, and I just came to.
A lot of it's sort of raising around and cooking redundant, this isn't, you know, a lot of new, actually, we are stipulated that we can observe the big amount, yeah, you know, allocated.
I can't recall what decision that was, whether it was.
Yeah. Yes, the definition of stipulation is timing and the grade, yeah.
I'll see if I can find.
Um. Just to agree the recommendations in the report, I can't actually find the sheet that says what we need to agree. I'm just agreeing that these are fine.
Hang on. There's a lot of them, isn't there?
Yeah, it might. We think, I mean, if you could say thank you to Kerry.
Yeah.
I think you're just agreeing to.
Adopted review.
To adopt the review documents and policies. You can do them as all as one.
Yeah, in future, it might be a little bit more manageable if we've kind of had one, had them spread out over a few meetings. So, yeah, we'll have a chance to.
I think we only review them every four years, don't we?
Yes.
And that's why it's all come to you at once. Um. I think they all sit together, so it's a bit difficult to spread them out throughout the year. But you, the thing is, you've only seen them once every four years.
Max.
So I was thinking about the Michael map, then to review over four years, because we've got pricing on on there. So I think that's a difficult thing to do, and he's actually reviewed the management. Now.
Are you talking about the pricing or the policy?
Well, I think if the pricing is in policy, you've got to review and have that.
Yeah.
And what I would say is, these haven't been reviewed for such a long time, which is why they've had to be done in such a long way, there is now opportunity to get a highlight. So I think in the future, uh, it would be much simpler because much less will change.
Yeah.
But I do think it needs annual, otherwise you will find yourself in four years' time waiting buying a giant curb on Monday again. And try and clash our, I just think it is good to, and also it gives us that opportunity if. We wanted to consider something like a plastic, you know, disposal, it can be up to that size.
So if we um with the policy, maybe if we put that back to being reviewed once a year. But all of the other things like the cemetery benches and things, four yearly? Or do you want all of them back every year?
Not English.
All of them.
All of them. And as I say, um, there will be minimum changes so that you won't be watching all the way through the. Less of them, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it will be more manageable.
Yeah. Changes are highlighted, good for the, and the car.
I don't remember who else done the training or cemeteries a while then. And I found it was, it was done by the council's management and co- 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 management and commerce of those.
Okay, yeah.
We we got that from time ago. Issues is so technical and I also did some of the. But I was like, sure, I've got the speed of it, but the technical terms like home, maybe after when you bury it, I don't think of all still hard forward on that. On that train, it's funny, what is it? But I can't remember, I don't know, you're just going to forget it. Uh, but I was wondering if it's worth, because we are now talking so much, it's a bit of a issues. Um, I'm talking to them and providing all the policies, check the regulations, actually, what about? This was to bring back that piece of training, might be. I've been pleased that it just to be a bit more affordable. I think it's going to be a little bit more cautious. That's one of the reasons there is useful. Um, even if we want to revise the policy here, we have a fresh track in the mind, so we know fast keeping it, we have to. Big one.
Did you do it online?
That was the message. And we can, they do it in person as well. We uh. Last time, I think at Fakenham, um, we were a couple of the new mental staff. So they help load the group. Um, but yeah, S L C C, um, centuries, long selling more and managing the site, yeah.
They, I mean.
It's a big sort of guidance.
Yeah, but it was deep broad. I mean, it covers everything from the legislation, uh, to guidelines to. You know, where you're working on and that without the management, the public, it's quite important. Uh, it's a bit of a challenge, so somebody that feels if they're looking to the balls, so they have to do it with some first. I think that it was to bring it back, maybe some hours or months if you'd like to, you can take it to me.
Okay. Just a suggestion. Yeah, speaking of this. Yeah, great. Okay, any other comments on this?
There is a number of September twenty third. You know, pretty much.
So it's not that long ago then?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think it was a bit after we were in.
So it's only 18 months ago that you had the training, that's not that long ago.
It was in the day, it's like, was it like four hours in the middle of the day?
Yeah, would be. I'll look into it.
Okay, so um right, we are um happy.
We have a proposal and a second of. So there's two parts we're now voting on, is one, they accept the policies and two, that we bring them back yearly.
Okay, so first, uh should we do them together?
Yeah.
Okay, so propose, uh so we accept the policies and we'll be bringing them back annually for review, have a proposal. And a second, Stuart, all those in favour? Everybody, great. Right, excellent, on to rainwater harvest then. Right, so we asked for this to come back with more information from a previous meeting, um. The same.
Do you want, do you want Nick to give an update on the information or have you got, do you want to go straight into questions?
Because, does anyone want to?
Really?
Is everyone happy with that? Don't be shy.
So, um. It's a great idea, it's a brilliant idea, it will get us to develop, you know, much likely, there are these pieces, which I'm all for. Um my reservations are as follows. Um we've put aside thirty thousand as the amount following the installation, the all over. Yeah, yeah, um. I don't think it should be using. As sizable a chunk that we actually wouldn't do by installing three, set up a, anyone. Installations, it needs to be normalized, it's in ambitions. Um. And the reason is, it's quite simple, um. I think that we need to revive a really competitive base for what we've done, in fact, thirty thousand. We need to show people that we've spent a different style. And I'm uh, in my shadows, to buy this, it's every chance we'll discover on pop. As well, um the more things we get out of that thirty thousand, the better. Um for our purposes, which any credit can be more, because it will hopefully stop a lot of nonsense with your. Uh so multi town council needs, if we can show what we've done, is a really good, great project. In different sorts, different types of people, yeah. So if I was to urge us to sort of throw that all before the rest of the tunes, then there are a term of uses to sell that.
I am, can I just say that um I agree, Nick and I spoke about this today and what we're proposing, or we've got to change our proposal to you, is that we look at the shambles and the cemetery. As our first two points, um the shambles, because we can then use that grey water in our planters. And the one at the cemetery, so that members of the public can use that on their plots um for their flowers. So that's what we're.
So do we have an idea of the cost for the cemetery?
Nick's got an update.
Cemetery was very cheap in comparison to most of the others, because we could get away with water butts. And around coming off the gutters and chapel itself, it would cost each, um so that can be used for sort of the watering of the barrels and stuff on site. Uh there is a proposal also uh for a tank to go into the back, the rear cupboard of the chapel. Uh and that will feed an outside tap, so again, members of the public can use the water for their flowers. Rather than taking the, you know, water off the maze, or give an option of the water with the best feeling of cycle from the roof. Um it can be used for the watering of the graves and graves at the cemetery. So I think roughly it came in around about a four thousand, yeah.
Right, so my question on that is, do, does it need to be this type of rainwater harvesting? Could we not install water butts and taps? Or like just the, you know.
So one of the, one of the things we're looking at at the moment is our workshop area, so eventually we hope to build a canopy roof over the current containers that are there. And again, we can then do the rainwater harvesting, um and we can use some IVC tanks to go up there, um which would be a cheap uh in-house option. Um but the ones that are external around the chapel, we will need some extra support with externally. Especially the tap coming in, obviously for the people to use the water on their graves, um because that'll be a certain amount of pump being sorted in there. Um but the water butts and things, we can obviously try and look at doing in the house to bring the costs down, that's an option you can, you know, look at in the house, if you're doing.
And what you have to remember is with rainwater harvesting, we're stopping the water, um which is wasted going into the ground, we're actually reusing it. So and we're stopping um that by using extra water that then goes into the, into the um drains as well. So we're creating more of an issue when we're watering our planters with run off water.
Terry.
Um I feel that's a really good place to be doing this, a really obvious way, that we can be satisfied that the public is what we do. Um like I see channels, they're just, so. I'm thinking often, so the bubbles can just.
So my question was, because I thought that cage lane toilets would be a good one as opposed to the shambles, because that can then feed into the public toilet system. So what, why did you guys feel that the shambles was better for?
Because we, we need um water to water the planters. Now, the watering of the planters is coming in-house. And um we use a lot of water on the planters in the summer, as you can imagine, and by using that grey water, it just gives us that extra. Um sort of saying to people, we're using grey water, we're saving it going into the sewer, um and we're relocating.
It will, it will take a large proportion, supplement a large proportion of the water, um we probably will never have enough water to water. All of us, it's probably, but it will go out of the way into our chats, if we agree with that, you know, we're being seen, so it was, you know, we sample our water. Um especially when we go through the drought period. Uh I think it's important that, you know, we save our waters in these locations for that time. So we can go out to the public and say, absolutely, I'm using the water that we've stored in the tanks, we might take a couple of taps on the mains. Uh which obviously, you know, poses a controversy sometimes with the public, you know, that we're still continuing to water flowers and displays, but they're having to be, you know, careful with their water consumption.
So.
So I think.
But I, I do agree, I do agree that Cage Lane should be on next consideration. If these. Turn out to be a real good success, then we need to look next year at Cage Lane and other toilet facilities so that we can reduce the life of water.
Yeah, great. So the shambles, sorry, I can't quite remember, was bigger, but the shambles will have a much bigger chance than Cage Lane, yeah.
So. Um our initiation for radio harvesting is hanging with Blue. The farm, we have to go to Andrew Blue, so we've got, um we've got some, I've said a tree, that's wrong, and we've got some occasional toilets. Um but we have a national for blast, so I think that's why the shambles becomes a priority, because we want to use that least part for blast.
Well, I think, so, yeah, I I understand about the amount, because my question is that we wouldn't be plumbing the toilets straight around, because that would be used for plants anyway, and to sell, but. That's fine. So if we're looking at the shambles, sorry, Carla, did you have your hand up?
Yes. I was, sorry, I'm going to give you the show, I don't know. The chairman, he's already on the ground, no sense, um. I will feel pretty disappointed, if you step in, you're going to have a problem, you know, that's, that's. With measures, for less installation, less cost. Um I would say that the toilet response should be, which you can fairly quick. And I think it's very difficult to be mentioned, but I would say, the whole, the people from standard, you know, this is all. You've got to draw it, it's all a string, and what the ways come down, so you start with the house of debt, basically, you're dropping the cycles. Uh in the, in, straight in the course of three hundred and fifty, you can see that there's a lot of, there's a lot of toilet, very far, or central. Um it is for me to say that, that's, that's, we are doing something positive, we're not for example, in this instance. I think it's going to be possible in this, but I feel the rest.
Yeah, I don't disagree with any of that, um but I did, it is fine, it was a better one, I did it at the moment and start a relatively small bit too. And then it passed the extreme again, actually. I'd say that was a.
Are we happy that the shambles is uh up for?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we've got this, you know, this sort of feedback from the Sodai, when he was at its side, and, you know, these areas would be, you know, big wins for us to do installations. There was a few more sort of areas that we can do, that are more complex, um they will take a little bit more cost and involvement. Uh but I think it's definitely, like you said, first starting point, we're actually really, you know, doing this fall and dry, but then you can make a lot more, so absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so we're looking at six thousand five hundred for the shambles, four thousand for the cemetery, so we'd be at ten thousand five hundred for those two, which is.
Actually, that's a lot of money, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so if everyone doesn't have any more comments or questions about that, um do we have a proposal?
Yeah, but they're not.
Second, so Terry Lan proposal, so that, Chris second, all those in favour? Okay.